You're going to have to get it started since the district is not there yet.
All right, we start the city council joint regular committees Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, beginning, I guess at 6:00 PM. Yeah, let's close it down. Members, members present, Andrew Shotten, Jeff Pope, Mark Sack, Marty Kiefer, Kevin Myers, and, oh, and myself. Okay, I called it to order at 6:00 PM. And any public participation? Public participation, nope. So the order of committee business would be the service committee. We'll call that the order at 6 o'clock. First up is the classified ordinance 915.02, use of outside city limits. Who wants to talk about that?
I believe that it's passed over to the service safety director.
I don't know, the meeting or two ago, we talked about what kind of eradication we would have with changing the water rate outside the city limits to the same as in the city. So we got with Mike Kelvin, Terry Spiegel, and I worked on a spreadsheet for you. Oh, it's not too confusing.
You all have a copy?
The top box shows, and this is 2017 numbers, between domestic and commercial, we collected 155,000, some change, and then if we make it the same inside the city for that same usage, we would actually collect 103,702, which would be a decrease of 52,062.50. And so the next box is the Crawford County water line, which they fall under like the third or fourth tier because they're under a bulk rate. So we pulled Colonel Crawford out of that because they did almost $17,000 worth of business or using them, and that left 46,000 on the domestic. So as you can see, if we went to, and we decided to take over the county water line in the sewer, we would actually gain $65,000 in income. So as we talk about the county and the sewer district, and I know we really don't want to take it over to 2020, you guys wanted to see some numbers of what it would cost us to the budget. So as you can see, if you go to the same rate in and out, we would be ahead by about $13,000.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A question then about the, this is looking at a full year then for, the numbers using 2017, correct?
Correct.
For an entire year, it would be, it would be that, now I forget my question. We would not see this from the Colonel Crawford, from outside the county, the county water line until 2020 then probably.
Correct.
So this would entail us then going through, if the rates became effective as of January 1st or whenever it is you're going to make the rates effective, we would be losing $52,019 for this minus any customers that we would pick up elsewhere. Correct?
No, it'd actually be more than that.
It'd be more than that?
Because I pulled the county numbers out of, because if we're going to do it, we need to do it at the same time. Because if you, if you don't, then the county's numbers, and you leave them go for a year, their income will go down.
Do we have any rate increases scheduled for this coming January? There is a rate increase, isn't there?
I think 7%.
The 7% rate increase in January, coming, this coming January.
Well, I think it was just to give us an idea of numbers so we knew what we would be looking at for the budget, if you thought, had any thought of going it and doing it in 19. But I would, I would, my thought would be to leave it into 2020 to start it then, and that's if we take over the county water and sewer.
You mean all these rate changes for 2020 then?
Correct.
Okay. So we'd have the, we'd have the one increase that we know that's coming in January of 19?
Right.
Okay. And I would imagine there's probably another one scheduled for, for '20, January of '20?
We haven't got that.
You haven't got that for?
No.
Can I say that? We're also looking, starting 2019.
Excuse me, you need to identify yourself first if you would like.
I'm Terry Spiegel, utility supervisor. We're also looking at, starting, looking at it in nine months, whether we want, we want to keep it or not. So it'd be better to do it in 2020 because if we do it in 2019, then decide not to do it after nine months, that's kind of, kind of foolish at this, at that point.
Well, we're still working on the agreement with the commissioners about the district, and we have reached out to Sean Tappel to take the map and get it divided of who can go where, so we don't run into any problems. And he said to send him some dates and times, I do believe, and to meet with him. And then we're working with county commissioners about how we'll set it up for 19, which when we have that, we'll bring that to you so you can see all what, how we want to handle it in 19 for that year or nine month trial, to see how we're, we're going to build for what we do and basically take over Lynch's job. We're already getting paid for doing any repairs, so now it's just taking over Lynch role as far as inspections at the package plants, and then any repairs, which still still cover all those, but we won't run into any expenses other than our labor. So that's what we're trying to get an idea, how much time we're spending on manpower too for those nine months.
I think that also gets us past the part there, I think there are either two or three bills that are sitting down in the House and the Senate in Columbus that are also looking to address this, that customers outside of the city limits will pay the same rate. So I think if we were looking at '20 to put this into effect, because what I've been told about this fall is it depends who the new governor is. If the new governor comes in as a Democrat, these bills will probably pass in the lame duck session in November and December of this year, and one of them will pass. But if, if it is a Republican that's elected, that chances are these will just roll over into the next section of the House and Senate in Columbus.
So just to clarify, these, the figures of the top that are in the pink versus decreased, those figures, those are people that are?
Outside the city limits currently, paying one and a half.
Paying one and a half.
Commercial end of residential.
Right. And which would be the banks?
Timken subdivision.
Timken subdivision.
Yeah. Timken.
So.
Wentworth School.
So now, we're going to break, but they also don't pay anything tax. Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
I'm not saying either way, I'm just showing you the numbers. I'll do you guys.
Yes. Yes, cool. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm basically, I was just going to say, I think, you know, leaving the rates where they are for the time being, I think it's going to go back with the pace of the water line expansion, and then also the potential for expense of that, of those projects to increase, and then need for potentially more staffing, that those things could add up, and we're going to need to continue to receive. I'd say leave it work.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ryan, the conversation you and I had earlier today, I think you must share out that that was about your introductory rate that you wanted to just mention as a possibility, I think.
Oh, I just threw it down at the bottom of the sheet, that maybe for a new customer, a new household, you had like a year or two introductory rate to be the same, and then after that time, it would go to the one and a half. Just an idea, it's not, just throwing that there.
I got a question to follow up with that. So the introductory rate would that more or less coincide with what might happen in two years?
No, I hadn't really went that far with it, Bruce. It was just a, an idea to be competitive out there.
Basically realistically, it would be closer to 2021 by the time, by the time after.
It was just, I know Howard Water eventually is going to bump their rates. They can't sit at where they're at forever. It was just an idea to give a new customer a new rate for signing on, and if we can't come up with a way to draw parameters for that, then, or the mayor had suggested doing one and a quarter. Just throwing different ideas out there.
I don't, I don't dislike the idea of the two-year introductory rate, and then Rob would have to write it into the legislation to make it, you know, work, and I don't know if that poses any issues, any?
The only concern with, if you lock someone in at two-year introductory rate, other people's rates may be going up during that period of time, so you'd have to.
You'd have to write it.
Yeah, so that, you know.
If there's any increase that they would.
Mr. Chairman? And that is exactly why I'm not in favor of a two-year introductory rate. I think it needs to be the same rate that everybody else is paying, and if they're, and then they're going to move right along, if we're going to consider them our customers, then they stay on, they stay on the same level as the bulk of our customers are going to be getting. I think that needs very good, we don't need to do a two-year introductory rate.
Mr. Kiefer?
Yeah, the ones who are potentially our newest customers, if we get it out there to Crestline Road in '19, they don't care what the rate is, they just want water. They're, they're desperate. So, you know, they know what the rate is, and they're willing to take it because they need water. But I do think we need to look at, if we take on the county water line and we lower the rate to like a pending bill in the House, in the State Senate, the House, we might as well, we can bite the bullet then now instead of waiting and get hit hard. I'm saying in 2020, not right now. Let's wait. Because if we take on the county water line, we're going to be ahead, we're not going to be behind, but you also need some more figures like you're wanting to do for the nine months. So that can give us an actual better picture on, but I think we got, we got to, we got to get moving and get this water line out there. That's my bigger thing, you got to get it out there to Crestline in '19, and we got to, we got to block more than Howard Water. We got to take steps a road because there are too many customers that we could lose that we won't have ever, we won't have any potential getting. I mean, sulfur springs is one thing, but let's, let's not let them have steps, steps a road. That's my opinion.
Just to, when you say Crestline, you're not saying Crestline to city up, you're saying Crestline.
No, 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 Crestline, County Road 35.
County Road 35, okay.
And call Crestline Road.
I know it is.
I'm just saying.
I know it, but I.
I'm just saying, out there, out to, what's the road? I can't.
Albryte?
Chambers, Albryte? Chambers, out to Chambers. The person that lives there at the corner of Chambers has an extensive water system that she's got to get it out of her pond. So she's wanting water too, so there are guaranteed customers there. I'm, I'm not talking Crestline, Ohio. That's too far.
Just make sure that we have a couple, a new person here this evening, and I didn't want them to think that we were talking to the city.
Oh, no. No, no, not Crestline, Ohio, no. It's called Crestline Road, sorry.
Yeah, you're good.
After this discussion, will letters could be going out then immediately to all the new customers, respective new members, or new customers?
So we're just, that's just information. Any other questions? I guess, want me to continue, Bruce, or?
You're doing good.
Don't take your.
You're not free to, up to next week.
All right, well, next up's the classified ordinance 951.01, utility service extensions can be promoted. So I think this is just to wrap us. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, sir. There's been some confusion over the years about the, you have annexation is required on our utility service. So we played with the language a little bit. You'll see the new proposed language in there that's highlighted. I think it clarifies it, actually repeats itself a lot of the time. But I think that's as clear as you can get. I don't see this confused number of words I heard in the piece of legislation since I've been here.
Would you remember five?
Number five, in section 915, 951.01a5, we define that extension of city water service only will not require annexation to the city of the state. Part B, you know, make sure we clear utilities other than water. And right now, that's, you know, sewer, you know, so, trash, new things, store water.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, I think this would be a good thing for us to do, so that those who are contiguous and not wanting to annex, but they need our water, and they're not going to hesitate to take the water. I know you may have a different opinion of that, but I'm just, I mean, we've had, I know we've been discussing Timken subdivision, that's, but eventually, I know some of them out there in the area that I've been just mentioning, they would like to annex, but they don't have enough people, they've got people in between them and the city, so they won't annex. I think this would be, it would help a lot of people understand if we like to allow steps a road or wherever else we may go, they won't feel threatened and thinking that we're going to try to annex them. Just the water, just water. So, that's my opinion.
Yeah, well, and, you know, I've got the same complaint I've had for years, that we've got people, then those people that, the banks and the, and the TSC and the. They're getting sewer too, right? I'm assuming they do.
TSC receives sewer.
But we can't do anything with them, so.
It's, if they, or you get the side mill that you want to shut off the service? That's the, that's the, and the penalty provision of this code section is if you refuse to do those, those steps, that the council can vote to turn off their service. The mistake that was made in some of, some of those is that none of these things were recorded on their, on their deeds in exchange for accepting the service because they were giving the services before these things were in place. So at this point, we could continue to serve them, or we can shut them off if they don't annex, if they indicated they don't want to annex, so. The banks do want, I'm sorry, the banks do want it annexed, but we have that, continue, continue this issue. Pretty, pretty united.
We need a legislation request if this is what you want.
We need legislation request if this is what.
I'll make a motion to request the legislation.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess there's a lot of kids that was all, we wasn't. So, what's next to, oh, my, off the place. Oh, here we go. A bu, oh, amendment of airport bid resolution. Always the button stuff.
Who let the service director handle that one?
I can't wait till this project is over.
Is this the third, Mr. Chairman, is this the third mistake Crawford, Kelly?
Well, it's kind of a mistake, but kind of not, because we rebid it. Some of the items went up in price, so it put the project at 162,000, which our legislation and resolution only calls for the project to be at 1/5. So if we can change this to 165, which it should come in under 162, I would think, or no more than that, it changes our amount that we would be responsible for, I think it comes to like $680. And we have that available in outside contractors to pay that. We wouldn't need to appropriate any more money, but if I go back and look, like Southern Avenue, we did add 10% or 15%, we didn't do it for this either. I don't know why, we'll have to make sure that doesn't happen again, but, but there was a couple items that went up in price.
But the city shares is 5%, correct?
Correct.
So it's about $100.
Yeah.
And but then that would re, then, Mr. Chairman, would that include the rotating beacon?
No.
No?
No, and this one says, hey, you're actually removing that from this. So, no, it still doesn't include that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I believe that's because they said that they, paving and cracking, reselling lost more than what they.
Yeah.
And they want to be more of a job than they planned on to begin with.
It was worse, in worse shape than what they figured out in the linear fee that they needed to seal. But everything got turned into the FAA, and everything's fine. This isn't stopping anything. They've got all the paperwork from Crawford, Murphy, and Kelly, and the FAA sent over all the paperwork this week, and if we didn't all sign, then it'll go back in the mail Monday or Tuesday.
So we basically just need a motion to request legislation to change this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
It's, I could, it's already been bid, right?
Correct.
And so we already know we want to bid?
Correct.
Okay. So we don't, we don't need to, we need new legislation amending this, but it doesn't need to amend the entirety of the, which says the publication cost. It only needs to amend the not to exceed amount, so the, the, all the stuff about authorizing it to go out to bid and all that.
Okay, that'll make it cheaper?
Yeah, so it's just a, it's just a motion to amend 231, 2018, to increase the not to exceed value in the city share.
What you said, I'll make that motion.
Do we amend 231, or do we amend 206?
Oh, yeah, because this is an amendment of an amendment.
Yes.
So it is amending 206, 2018, yes.
Okay.
By increasing the not to exceed amount to whatever the number is, and the city's value to whatever that number is.
Okay. Can I have that motion?
I do.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, in the service committee, we need at 6:23. In public, ladies and gentlemen, 6:23. And talking about the ORDC grant administration for the arch. All right. So we just need to authorize the mayor to look into this, right?
I put a picture of kind of a, I've been to Sandusky in the last couple of years, this is a shade highland, but this is kind of just an idea, this is a very simple arch. I mean, I, our design would be, you know, maybe something, something like that, or maybe it wouldn't be, but my idea was, we've got a very important date coming up here, 2021, well, probably one of the biggest dates in our history, we're going to have a bicentennial, which will be a big celebration, and I thought it would really be nice to have, to celebrate that, to have a nice archway. If you've been out of town at all, you go through many towns and see these arches, and small towns, big towns, they're very attractive. I would say, fusiris established 1821, something like that. I mean, that's, that would be my idea, we, you know, we could sort of talk about it too. And initially, I was thinking we need a Charles Street, Mary Street bookend, but someone came up with a good idea recently that it would look really nice on Washington Square, and I was looking at one that would look really nice there, just have it right in the middle of downtown. I mean, it would be beautiful there. So that's something that can be decided. This is just to study the possibility, we're not committing anything, this is either funds that were put in the state budget for us, to study the possibility, if we like the design, we see the cost, so we can apply for state funds in the next budget, and the intention would be to have it, you know, that no cost to the city. And then we have this monument, basically a monument for, basically for the success of this city for over 200 years, and show the people that are coming through there that, you know, that we're involved, you know, that we're looking forward, we're proud of our city, and it all ties in with, you know, making your city look better, you know, the parks, and that's what, you know, we've been doing for years, several years here, is trying to upgrade how we look, both in cleanliness and attractiveness, and including parks, that includes, you know, planting trees of the, actually, the other night at the, swearing in before the council meeting, a former resident came up to me and said, you know, how nice the town is looking. I hear this a lot, and they ask, when do you plant, when do we plant the trees, you know, if they look really nice coming into town, right on South Sandusky, but people notice those things. I mean, maybe we don't necessarily, we are here every day, we're in a hurry to get to it, throw, but when people come into a town, driving through it, you know, they're, they're looking around, you know, is it clean, you know, what's the downtown look like? The flower baskets, those things, like, I don't know if you've seen Nirmes' niche, beautiful flower baskets, boxes they have on the second floor, how attractive that is, the little things that we're doing to, you know, to make people notice us, and this is just part of this, and it's a nice thing about it, it's state money, we can study it, look at it, make a decision which way we want to go, and if we want to go that way. And we'd like to have ORDC, the same people that are doing the grant for the art park stage and have done the shine in our park, it would be in charge of it for now, so.
Any questions? Right here.
Yes, sir.
Your assumption or your, your plan would be another ORDC grant?
No, no, state, state grant.
Okay.
Two years.
Okay.
We need it up by 2021, so we have three years, not quite three years.
If, if we don't get a grant for that?
Then we have two options. We don't do it, or we go out and raise money.
Do you even fathom of a guess what we'd be looking at to build it?
Probably around $1,000 per arch.
Okay.
Yeah, probably, because the engineering costs are, you know, they're not cheap, and the, the actual arches are, you know, there isn't a whole lot to it, you can see that.
My last question then is, if we accept, apply for and accept this grant, and don't get a subsequent grant to build them, and don't fund it on our own to build it, are we looked at unfavorably for accepting this grant to not move forward?
No, because it's, it's got nothing to do with that, these are two separate things.
Just wanted to ask.
Yeah, two separate things. And I already been in contact with our state senator, Dave Burke, who went to bat for us and got us those two grants, possibility, we had a conversation about it, you know, We had a conversation about it, you know, getting it in the next one too, so, um, you know, nothing's guaranteed. But, uh, they've always been favorable to us. I mean, it was a fantastic grant, uh, for the art park and they continued the stage. I mean, it was really nice to have that too, so. So I don't anticipate it, but, um, you know, there's going to be a committee formed here, not in the two, not in the, uh, two distant future to start planning for this bicentennial. So it doesn't, you know, sneak up on us and it's not over and we're, you know, see what happens. So we want to be able to, uh, celebrate the accomplishments of this community over the past couple hundred years and with an eye for the future. Because none of us are going to be around for the next hundred year end this year, but we would can make a mark here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a question?
Uh, on this application for this grant, will they also, um, give us information on what the, uh, maintenance cost of the so-called arch or arch?
Yeah, I could, I could, you know, I could, uh, when we can do that with the engineering cost, what's the maintenance? I mean, they're probably, I don't, I don't know what maintenance is. I suppose we could reach out to other cities.
Because, you know, we're going to be, we're going to be responsible for it, even if it gets paid by a grant, we're still going to be responsible for it. And what is our liability on this also? You know?
Same in our parks, you know, it's, we, it's our property, you know?
I'm just saying, you know, it, that, you know, if it could get paid for, okay, but then we have to assume all responsibility.
Yeah, it'll be ours, just like, just like all of our parks are.
Right.
All of our families donate to us, you know, we have.
Right. But I just, I just need to know what, you know, what it's going to cost us in twenty, you know, the next twenty years of maintenance.
Probably paint, I guess. I mean, it doesn't look like it. I mean, the arches I've seen around, I don't think are high maintenance at all.
Right, but I'm saying, we, we still need to know that, because.
We'll make sure that gets addressed.
Okay.
With being over, I think?
Yes.
With the being over a state route, how often will we be required to inspect it?
Well, that'll all be, we'll have all those questions. I've already met, already talked to our end city engineer about it, you know, and we, we're getting a plan right now that we're going to be able to, uh, you know, show some designs and present costs.
Mr. Chairman. One last thing. I, I did talk, I had other people ask me about this and I didn't get too favorable of the ones who talked to me, okay? They weren't too favorable about this because they said, you know, they were saying, well, we could use that twenty-five thousand dollars elsewhere. And I said, you can't, well, I had to explain to them, a grant is very specific and you can't use it, you can't deviate from it because.
Yeah. It's used for that once, but.
Right. And, you know, and they were just saying, you know, but then their question was about the expense of maintenance and liability and.
I don't think it's going to be.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, and that's why I wanted to ask if that could be included in the report because.
Sure, we can.
We need to know that if we're going to go through it, if we do go through with something like this, so that.
We'll make sure that gets addressed.
Okay.
But this is all, this is all grants, this is no, nothing else, city funds.
Right, I understand, but a lot of people didn't understand that and they, you know, I just.
Well, hopefully, you know, hopefully that word gets out there that it's a grant. Grant means, you know, it's somebody gives, giving you money for it.
Correct.
Well, the, the way I, uh, approach those questions was.
Sure.
That money's out there. Either we can go ahead and try to get it or maybe it's something we don't need, but we'd like to have it. Either we're going to get that money or someone else's. So we can either.
Well stated.
We can try to get it, if we get it, fine, if not.
There'll be a way too, Mr. Chairman. This, this, uh, if you look at what we've lost, uh, for, uh, local funds, you know, the state and some of these state taxes, you know, we've lost. You know, you have to tie all that in. We got a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for Shines Park, which we might not have. We got another hundred-and-twenty-five for the states. That money's in tax, there's about a three, roughly a three billion dollar surplus of the state. Uh, and, and, and a portion of that is from people in Busiris. So let's, let's apply for grants, let's apply for this, let's improve our city. They can always say no, you know, let's, let's move forward.
The twenty-five thousand for engineering, I mean, that, that seems kind of excessive to me. Um, don't they have, I mean, they have, this has, this can't be the first arch that's ever been built. I mean, I mean, there has to be some others.
Let me give you an example. Engineering costs are incredibly expensive. One of the first things I really want to do, people have mentioned this too, I mean, this would be great for Busiris. If you're, if you've been up seventy-one or over around thirty, Worcester has the nice little thing above, one of the old passes that says Worcester. Ashland has that, you know? I called all those places a couple of years, two or three years ago. You know, I thought maybe fifty thousand dollars, you know? Two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. A substantial portion of it was engineering. It's incredible, incredible cost to some of these things.
And is the cost, is this, I mean, is this having to go through this grant because we're putting it over a state route?
No, it's got nothing to do.
It has nothing to do with that. So if we were to do this engineering survey outside of the grant, I mean, is that plausible? I mean, is that something that we could still apply for a grant using our?
You mean, we have to pay for it?
If some, yeah, I mean, I'm just, I just think there's got to be some other, some company has built an arch and there has to be existing data that, I mean, I, I just, I'm finding it hard to imagine them.
It's the, no, okay, just, uh, in, Mr. Chairman? Um, thank you. Engineering does not work like insurance. It's not nearly as competitive and, or any retail type business. You know, you know, it, it just doesn't work quite like that. And I, I know if we just have this designed for downtown and we decide to put it on somewhere else, we'll still have the engineering done for it, compliments of the grant. Though it can be, you know.
Keep in mind too, one of the things that they're looking at on the engineering studies is not just the simple engineering of the, the arch. You want traffic studies, you know, you want, uh, you know, highest rates, you know, through town obligations and soil and all that sort of stuff. So it's not just, just engineering on that. It'll factor in some of the other things too, like that we can use.
I get it. I mean, there's going to be a lot of ways in which this is going to pile up a high cost and probably unnecessarily. I just, I guess my, my thought on this and, and, you know, would we be building this arch if we were paying for it out of our own funds? I realize it's state money and I realize it's grant money, but we also live in that state. And, you know, we've complained a lot about how the local government fund has been held back and kept away from us. If we build this arch, we're going to have the state senator and the state representatives coming in and getting a pat on the back for giving us what really is our money, uh, back to us. So I have an issue with that. I guess, uh, you know, I don't, I don't dislike the idea of the arch. I mean, that's not really, you know, I, I don't have a beef with the arch per se. I just feel like the whole grant process of asking for what's truly, uh, our money, uh, in a way, I, I have an issue with that. So I, I, I just, I feel like if we were putting a, putting together an arch project on our own within the city using local resources, you know, JNF Construction or some other local company, I feel like you probably could get this done for a fraction of the cost of what it's going to cost going the grant route.
Well, that, it would actually go out to bid and JNF could possibly bid on it, so.
Sure.
Yeah, but, uh, keep in mind, you think of downtown from Liberty Remembers to Millennium Park to Shines Park, they will put up with donations and grants. So try to imagine, Shines Theater's still sitting there from the best. And so it's, it's, thank God we've got the grants and I understand completely, you know? Fortunately though, the state is required to balance the budgets, well, we are. We're, we're required to balance the state way. If, if you go back to two thousand and ten, when the downtown was redone, that was basically redone on, um, you know, federal money. You know, so the town's been improved quite a bit over and above our means to pay for it. And I, your philosophy, I agree with your philosophy one-hundred percent, but if we don't get it, somebody else is going to. I think is what it comes down to, like Mr. Wirecross said, so.
And, and there, for some degree, uh, Galleon just got grants for a couple of, uh, ambulances. So, uh, yeah, we need to look at some grants like that, so, uh, you know, for our future also.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And Galleon just got, I, it was about half a million dollars for fixing up downtown's, their downtown building, which would be nice for us to get too, so we need to get that one.
And we were just, the fire department just got some grants. I feel like that type of grant, uh, makes more sense in terms of, I, I, I feel like if this art, this art, and this again more, and I'm also trying to get off the philosophical, uh, train of thought that I'm on here, but I don't see how the arch benefits, uh, someone from outside of Busiris, Ohio. And it's a statewide grant, so that's, you know, but that's, that's, I guess, my future time to count on that one.
The way it works, I guess. Did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to comment that if we're talking about the square, there's some unknowns about that square up there. That, uh, if you, if you go back some, uh, there's, uh, one of those underground, I mean, we used to have trolley car tracks going through there and we've had, you know, and that's part of the oldest part of town. So, uh, sisters and, and other things that are under there that are going to really probably take some engineering money in order to be able to say for sure that it could go there. And, uh, so I see that as spending that money right now with this grant money is better than finding it out later.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, that, the decision as to where this would, it would go is a, I mean, that's, you're going to have a thousand different opinions on where people think that'll be best to go. Or a hundred. But where it actually goes, I mean, I, is that, is that narrowed down at all or?
Yeah, well, most, most places wanted it in their most, most communities, put it in their most visible places, on their main streets, you know?
I mean, I think I heard somebody say something around where ninety-eight and Route Four come together and the south side of the town, but I didn't, didn't know if that was.
I've heard that too.
And that, I, that's, yeah, and that was just, uh.
You know, that's, that's a possibility.
And that's not me saying I want it there. I heard a few people say.
Yeah, most of the time it's in a, it's in a promenade area, like in a downtown area. That's something that can be decided, you know, just if we go ahead and study, then, you know, we'll present a plan and, and see.
Think of that as where you see them. And that's the plan of what.
Right.
Do you have to state your name?
Kurt Finkhauser, sixteen-seventy-five South Sandusky. I wanted to follow up with the, the mayor's thing there on, you know, our bicentennial coming up, making Busiris look, you know, like a good, thriving, successful town. And I've been thinking about this for about six months now. We used to have lights on that North Water Tower that shined up and you could see Busiris on there when you drove past thirty. And I think they might have been shut down because of the cost of running them, but now there's LED lights. I thought, wouldn't that make Busiris look successful and like vibrant, thriving industrial, because industrial park's right there? If we had those lights turned on again, you know, and then all that traffic going on thirty, you're going to see that, late traffic on Route Four. And then, you know, it's a sign of Busiris being successful because Uppers got lights on their water tower. I drove over there and seen there, so, you know, I, if it's a thing about the lights being expensive to run, maybe they could put a timer so they shut off at midnight or something.
Good thought.
I agree. I agree with you. I like that idea because they need to change them out in the seasons too.
All kinds of possibilities, sir, for now, yeah. Let's get to it. One more question.
When you, if this legislation goes through to authorize you, do you have to specify at that time where you're going?
No.
It's not specified. It would not be specified in the legislature.
It might have, it will specify precisely.
Yeah, no, it doesn't have to.
Okay, any more discussion? Can I get a motion with the, the mayor, uh, on behalf of the city, uh? Okay, this, I guess?
Entering a contract with the ORDC.
For the.
Great.
So. Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Now on to Mary Street Properties, okay. So we've got, it looks like we have an appraisal. Appraisal, whatever. Any discussion, or is this just, you're just bringing these to us or what?
Yeah, that's.
No. You got buyer?
Well, no, um, I, I think, um, the Marion Road waxes here on Mary Street. So I think between the lot and the building, the appraisal value is around eighty thousand. So, um, I had John Rostash put some stuff together for both properties on what can go there and what can't. And really just looking for some guidance, what kind of price we're looking at, uh, if we can get it out to bid, sell it and sell it combined or single or, um, just looking for some input so we can get moving on it. I don't know, Rob, do you have anything else you want to add or?
No, um, you have to, if you authorize it to put it out to bid, council will have to approve the, uh, high bidder. And you can set parameters, uh, as the minimum bid you want. And I think included in here is a letter from, uh, Mr. Rostash as to what the, both the properties, the ownership of the business. That gives you indication of what uses are permitted for those buildings if they're sold. You can do one piece of legislation for those properties and it's, you know, resolution to prove the certain safety record for amount of bids.
Well, obviously we can reject any bids or, like.
No, if, if you have a minimum bid.
Oh, you have.
The high bid, then the high bid exceeds your minimum, you can, you can reject it and you can bring it into council and reject it, but.
Well, there's a minimum. As long as it's, yeah. Oh. Go ahead, Rob.
I was just going to comment that the, the properties that we're talking about are at twenty-thirty-seven Marion Road, which is on the south end of town, uh, right on the, right on the edge of town, south on the west side of the road. And then the other properties we're talking about are the, uh, on West Mary Street, three-oh-one West Mary Street, which it's a, it's commercial, not our business now, general businesses have been there. But that's where those two properties are, so that no one's getting a different idea as to which properties we're talking about.
Okay.
Bruce? As far as the sale of the properties on, on Mary Street, we have, can we request the, the properties to be sold separately? For the sake that we get twice as many, we get, we get different buyers, let's put it that way. We're opening the market to different buyers instead of just one, one buyer that's going to have to figure out how to use both properties.
Uh, that's up to you guys to decide how you want us to do that, so.
I would, for the same thing you're talking about, disagree with you though, because there may not be enough room for parking. If you wanted a business to come in and that would allow, I mean, the, the price, I get what you're saying, you could potentially see both of them rise up, but.
When they're, when one buyer are trying to outbid the second buyer?
They could, but I guess I'd worry about if, if, if somebody's got something in mind and they're unsuccessful in getting both, then, then maybe they're not able to do what they wanted to do with the first and we have to pay a lot different again, just like we have.
You have something?
I, I lean to agree with, uh, Kevin, just for the simple fact that.
I, I lean to agree with, uh, Kevin, just for the simple fact that, I mean, that garage by itself has basically no parking. You could easily change that garage into an establishment, it could be an eatery, it could be lord knows what you decide to make it, and if you don't have that parking lot over there, you really can't have a business. And I just, I see it selling better that way than by itself, 'cause even if you were to put something on the parking lot, you could easily knock the garage down and make that parking, and you can use something bigger, vice versa. I mean, it just seems to me, that and separate them out, what's one gonna do with the other one being, I, I don't see the two separate people would.
Well, I think if there's, if there's, okay, if, if you have to buy them all, maybe someone's just interested in the one building, and then, oh yeah, I'm gonna end up with empty lot, at least you still have one, and, but, if they have to take them both anyway, I want this building, but I don't want that lot, you know, so. Yeah, they could turn around and try to sell it, but how long have we been trying to sell it, so? So, I, I think, you know, if they want to vote, then they, they, they should buy both, but that's my opinion, so I don't know. If we, should we take a consensus of what everybody thinks, or what? Together, or?
Mr. Chairman, the other thing too, if you, if you, like John was recommending that you, you know, package them as one, um, and if we go out to an auction on it and when we get those kind of comments, or we don't have the bid, the minimum bid that we're looking for, then, uh, then would we have, Rob, would we have the option of coming back and then doing it again on a separate basis?
Yeah, if you, if you don't receive your minimum bids, then.
We can come back and change it.
Yeah, ultimately, you're gonna have to re-bid.
But I would strongly consider trying to do it as one for the first time, and see, 'cause I, I think Doug made a, a good point there. If it's a business and is interested in any kind of retail or food establishment, that parking lot is gonna be really critical to them.
Just one comment about that vacant lot, that, you know, of course, that's been part of the city for a long time, and that property has been, been cleaned up completely, bustered, has passed it, we took everything out of there, all the, the land underneath is, is safe, there is nothing pending on that, that property at all as far as safety's concerned, as far as there being any kind of oil or contamination or anything like that.
Okay, so basically, we just leave, uh, this as is, we just leave legislation to, or a resolution, is it? To, uh? You say this?
I mean, you can do both on one piece, but you need a resolution authorizing him to put them out to bid, and you need to set a minimum if you want, eighty percent, ninety percent, twelve percent, whatever.
Yeah, so what's, yeah, I guess that's the question we have for that, if maybe what's the, what do you think the minimum should be?
How would we know, you know, who, pardon, John, how would we know? You know, yeah. You just go by these, three hundred and ninety thousand and eighty thousand, five hundred is the appraised value, correct? Am I?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Those prices in bold are the appraised value.
Correct, you have those for.
So, eighty percent? I, I think if we, I think if we put it that it has to hit at least eighty percent of the appraised value, then, uh, fairly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Eighty percent of eighty thousand dollars is sixty-four thousand, but if you're gonna do this as one, um, you know, if you're gonna do this one, uh, ordinance to resolution, eighty percent of three hundred and ninety thousand is, you know, about eighty thousand, you know, about three hundred and ten thousand, so. So, you know, so when you, when you pick the, you know, when you pick the minimum bid, you know, make sure you include the water distribution garage in that too.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If we go ninety percent, we do forty-seven thousand dollars, if we sold those, that's good process.
Well, and you know, if you do ninety, come back and do eighty.
I have one thing too, these are, these are, uh.
They don't have to be the same either, do they? One could be eighty percent, one ninety percent.
Okay. These are, these prices were done in two thousand seventeen, so it could have been gone up, you know, since then.
Or we could hear it for the whole price.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, um, and I, I think as I was talking to Rob about doing this, you know, we could always try to do it like we did the farmland bids.
Bring them in.
You, you know, you put them in on a bid of eighty or ninety percent, and they come in, it gets them in the door, and they can raise their bid. I, I don't know, maybe that won't work. That's a moderate question.
Yeah, um, once, once they authorize it to go out to, out to bid, um, the manner and method of bid is, is kind of out of your discretion, and that's the way we do most of our property bids, is that, um, most of our property leases, at least, are that, you know, have a bid, in which everybody with a qualifying bid then has not been able to raise it, so it's a combination of written and live bid.
Now, that, that sounds like a feasible way to do this, that way. Could be a little more competitive and potentially get at least the appraised value.
Yeah, so, I guess, really the decision is, do we put it out at the appraised value, ninety, eighty percent, twelve percent?
Why don't we go, why don't we do ninety percent? Remember, not losing as much, and if we don't get anything, then maybe we have to reconsider it.
I agree. Well, we just tore that garage out there on the south end of town, and it was in really great shape, and we tore through it, so, I mean, I can't see that it won't get ninety percent of its appraised value.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we gotta have a buyer, yeah, there's a lot of empty buildings around.
I make, I make a motion to put this as a resolution to go out to bid at ninety percent, and has to hit ninety percent.
Does each property have a bid separately at ninety percent?
Yes, each property. The Marion Road and Mary Street property has to both hit ninety percent, and.
So. Yeah. Did you have a question?
I just got a question. How, how would your method be tied to that ninety percent, or is it two separate?
It'd be two separate, yeah, two separate purchases, or two separate auctions, um, minimum qualifying bid, ninety percent, and then, uh, all qualifying bidders will be invited in.
So do we have to make that a part of the motion?
No, that's, that's a discretionary bid, but that's how we do all our farming bids and stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying we have a precedent if this is how we've done this in the past, so?
So I've got a first and a second, ninety percent of the appraised value, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Uh, all right, I'm on that. With that, I'm gonna wrap this up at fifty, uh, five, six, seven, fifty-seven, six fifty-seven PM, and, and business.
I'll call the finance committee order at six fifty-seven PM. First thing is, if that fire was in time, it came, it was to users outside of safety.
It's on hold for?
Yeah, service, on hold and service. Um, the amendment of the airport bid resolution from service, um, we just need to, uh, approval legislation for the amendment of resolution two of fix two thousand eighteen by increasing the not-to-exceed amount and the city share.
So moved.
Second.
Who made that motion?
Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The ORDC grant administration for the arch, um, this came from the public lands and buildings.
She did do that?
No, this was a whole. It's on hold.
The first one was on hold, and you voted on the second one.
Okay.
Back to the ORDC grant administration for the arch, um, this came from public lands and buildings, which would allow the mayor to enter a contract with the ORDC for the grant. Do I have a motion to?
So moved.
I'll second.
First by Dan, second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
The auditor is not with us this evening, but you have the, uh, same sheet that was handed out at the beginning the other night for appropriated funds in the fire levy, fire department, capital outweighed a sum of thirty-five thousand dollars for the city share of grants that they've applied for. Uh, they, we've received, uh, over forty-one thousand dollars in, uh, grants. So this, most of these are, uh, either nine, are they ninety-ten grants, ninety-five, five?
I think it was a little, little bit.
Little bit of, little bit of everything is in there, but we have to pay our portion of it. So this is just making the money available to do that, if she gets the correct paperwork in.
So do I have a motion to prove the appropriation?
So, second.
First by Kevin, second by E and D, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. We will read this at seven oh-two PM.
Health and safety, follow order at seven oh-two PM, and our agenda, we have crosswalks. Mr. Fankhauser brought to our attention the other night, uh, and this is something that we discussed a bit in the past as well. Uh, so in front of you, you have some pictures and some descriptions. Uh, the three crosswalks that I wanna bring up this evening would be on the east side and west side of the square, on the outside limits of the square, uh, so where the, where the road narrows again, so between Angles and the courthouse, between Zeus Tire and Dilgers, and also across Walnut Street from the courthouse to the success center. Um, you can see there, on the two on Mansfield Street, the red and white signs in the first picture, I can remember those signs being there from when I was a kid, um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna use the mayor's words, people notice them as they're going to and fro, but they don't notice them because they've been there so long, and I think, you know, you find that when you're trying to safely cross the street there, a lot of the cars just keep buzzing right on by. Um, the county, I've had a couple of conversations with people in the commissioner's office as well as the EMA office, the county's even interested in partnering with us to share some of the expense of, of better labeling, at least the two that are there right at the courthouse. Um, second page, a second picture on the front page, you see the crosswalk there by the courthouse on Walnut Street, simply has the yellow crossing sign, it doesn't even have the, uh, the sign that says stop. So the third picture down, um, these signs here are ones that can be bolted to the ground, and they, they have a little give to them if they're hit by a vehicle, and, uh, this particular one was taken, uh, I took this picture at the Abida campus over in Ontario, they've got several of them in their parking lot, and on the second page, I took one from the side, just showing you, it's nothing more than a, like a PVC tube that, um, has these signs attached to it, and it's got that give on the base there. Um, the last picture, they're actually did a simple Google search, now we may have better pricing, uh, with companies that we already do business with, but the simple Google search showed me that those signs are approximately four hundred dollars each, so for three of them, you know, we're only looking at twelve hundred dollars, and then you see there as well on the far right there on the Google picture, they do have other options, uh, lighted LEDs with, with solar power, now you're looking at eight hundred, which is sixteen hundred per intersection, we're getting into, into some more now. Um, but the two things I wanted to bring up, and I know this is just gonna go right back to the administration, I talked to Mr. Wirecross about this earlier today, this is just really us discussing it, putting it back in their lap with just the suggestion from us that we at least consider looking at, doing, taking a couple more steps to make this more, more safe for, for people to travel there, and, and maybe we need to look at some other intersections other than these three, near the hospitals, near the schools, and those instances, quite possibly those out of these would be interested in partnering with us to, to share that cost or offset that cost. So I, I'm just, I gave you a copy of yours, unless there's any other discussion, I'd like to throw that into your lap and, and let you run with it.
Yeah, we'll get it back to traffic commission and let you know when that meeting is, and.
I'd like to make a quick comment. I think it's a great idea, just for the simple fact that we widened those roads there where we took the four-way lights out, so you have extra room there now to put something like this in for a crosswalk, and to bring more attention to it, that's over by where the schools are at and stuff, so.
That's not where you're talking about.
That's not where I'm talking about. No, but I'm just saying, that's another place where it would be a great place to have them, there's extra room now with the road being widened, 'cause you don't have to have a turning lane, so you could easily put a crosswalk sign in there to draw more attention to that being a crosswalk.
Thank you for your consideration.
Yeah, I got, I got one thing. I think when we first brought this up a while back, and, uh, it was, the software goes were included in that. I, I think down there, if we, you just have a sign that says must stop for pedestrians and crosswalks, because, yeah, that's, that's the place that worries me more than anything, people come down to this.
Pushing down the hill on Plains Street, I think, we're gonna be repeating that also, it's a little faded, and so we'll be, uh, go back the next week.
Maybe, I'd say maybe an ad hoc committee might be in order to have a couple people looking at it, to, 'cause there's one that I would have thought of that, that makes perfect sense.
There's also some grants out there, um, the state, uh, ODOT has a grant called, uh, yeah, state pass of school, yeah, that we looked into, I, I, I talked to Superintendent Kimmel about some possibilities about doing something like that, he's definitely interested, so.
Something, something that catches your eyes is, is more appealing, I mean, instead of being just a, a stationery or something. I, where, where I was thinking about is, is, and I've seen many semis when they're traveling west and going by the courthouse, and then that road has attached, you know, leaning towards the north, I know a lot of semis will go left to center to get by that crosswalk, by that, uh, curb there, and I was just thinking, well, you know, it might wind up clipping that thing, ah, versus like a, a stationary LED, solar operated, so.
Well, and you're right, and at four hundred dollars a piece, if we clip, you know, three of them off now, we would see the cost of what the LED lighting might be, so that's a valid point.
Well, I, I just know how the state had done it out there on, or I guess maybe it's the county now, at, what, five ninety-eight, three thirty, I mean, that, that's really an intention.
Chairman, I, you know, when I was down in Florida, Fort Myers, on the beach, they have these all down, you know, the main drag.
They don't have snow blocks.
Granted, but they do have heavy traffic, and they don't have semis, that had to be the term, but.
I think we can all agree that something needs to, you know, let's just figure out what, what's making.
We're happy to get some options, talk about it, you know, traffic issues.
You need to.
Yeah, any other questions? And do I adjourn, or do I?
Recede the committee.
Recede recess of the health and safety committee at, uh, seven oh-nine PM.
Then you have public participation.
And is there any public participation? None? Mr. Ratt, if I yield to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm led to request an executive session of the city council to, to discuss details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure could be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office, so include RRC section one twenty-one, quote, two-two, G six.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved. I move that this time that the city council adjourns to, into executive session with all of available elected officers of the Bucyrus city administration and the service safety director, if available, to discuss details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols where disclosure could be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office, ORDC section one twenty-one, point two-two, G six.
So I have a motion that city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Bucyrus City Administration and the Service Safety Director, if available, to discuss details of security arrangements and emergency response protocols, where disclosure could be expected to jeopardize the security of the public body or public office pursuant to Higher Vest Code, Section one twenty-two dot two-two, G six. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Fo, may I lay a rule, call vote, please.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll go into executive session at seven ten PM.
Was taken...
Do you have to do the motion first?
Oh, we need a motion first, need a motion to adjourn the executive session, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. McKeeber, I'll give you the first.
Second.
Mr. Fo, I'll give you the second. Call vote, Mr. Hill.
McKeeber?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Saq?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so no action was taken, there's nothing referred, and it came out of this executive session, and that was at seven seventeen PM, that we adjourned executive session.
We finished this out now.
All right, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the joint greater committees.
So moved.
Mr. Wireball?
First, Mr. Second.
You got the first, Mr. Wireball. Second. Ms. Saq, second. All favors sound? Close saying. Joint greater committees are adjourned at seven seventeen PM.
Don't forget, if the committee has any questions, you gotta sign the thing.